All right, good evening. I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting of November 13th, 2017. The time is 7:30. Can we please begin with roll call?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Here.
Councilman Clark?
Here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Saltis?
Here.
And Mayor Hartwell?
Yes, I'm here. Would you please rise for an invocation to be given by Councilwoman Geddings and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
We thank God for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again, to receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Minutes, can I please have a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting of 10/23/2017?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
I second.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Can I please have a motion regarding the resignation of Ms. Grafstein?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council accept the resignation of Rosalyn Grafstein from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
And declare the seat vacant?
And declare the seat vacant.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mrs. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second, and I would like to add that she receive proclamation for her service.
Of course.
Okay, you.
Grave addition.
Agreed. Okay, a motion was made by Councilwoman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to accept the resignation of Rosalyn Grafstein from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, declaring the seat vacant, and issuing a proclamation thanking her for her service. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
The motion carries. All right. Before we adjourn this city council, we would like to present Councilman Richard Clark with a small token of our appreciation for your service. Mr. Clark?
Thank you. (applause).
Any words? Some words? Some brief remarks?
Fine, can I get the transcript?
Oh, okay. Here.
Okay. All right. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Is there any further business before the city council? The 31st city council? All right, hearing none. The city council is adjourned. All right, we'll open the next meeting with the oath of office of the 32nd City Council of Madison Heights, and we invite District Court Judge Keith Hunt to give the oath. Your Honor?
Thank you. of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Madison Heights, that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Madison Heights, free from partisan control, and that you will faithfully fulfill the duties of the office of mayor during the term of your office according to the best of your ability? So help you God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge. Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, would you be sworn in now?
Mark Bliss, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Madison Heights, that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Madison Heights, free from partisan control, and that you will faithfully fulfill the duties of the office of council member during the term of your office according to the best of your ability? So help you God.
Yep.
Congratulations.
David Bliss, raise your right hand for me, please. Do you, David Saltis, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Madison Heights, that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Madison Heights, free from partisan control, and that you will faithfully fulfill the duties of the office of council member during the term of your office according to the best of your ability? So help you God.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's it. You can sit down. Counselor-elect Rosalyn Grafstein, would you please come to be sworn in?
Rosalyn, if you'll raise your right hand for me, please. And do you, Rosalyn Grafstein, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Madison Heights, that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Madison Heights, free from partisan control, and that you will faithfully fulfill the duties of office of counselor during the time of your office according to the best of your ability? So help you God.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Again, I'd like to thank Judge Hunt for helping us this evening. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for having me.
Welcome to the team, Ms. Grafstein. Thank you to the other council members for serving and continuing to serve. If the clerk is ready, can we have roll call of the new city council?
Councilman Bliss?
Here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilman Geddings?
Here.
Counselor Grafstein?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Saltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
Yes, I'm here. The first order of business is election of Mayor Pro Tem. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, it's a real pleasure to nominate Mark Bliss to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the 32nd council.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to appoint Mark Bliss as the Mayor Pro Tem for the 32nd City Council. Is there any discussion? Thank you, Mark, for serving again. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
The motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none. Thank you for joining us, everyone. We're going to take a brief recess, about 10 minutes. Because we have about an hour of work tonight, some of you may not want to sit through the sausage-making of local government. So the families of any council member or whoever's here, feel free to stand up and feel free to leave after a couple minutes of photos. Counselor-elect Rosalyn Grafstein, would you please come to be sworn in?
Rosalyn, if you'll raise your right hand for me, please. And do you, Rosalyn Grafstein, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Madison Heights, that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Madison Heights, free from partisan control, and that you will faithfully fulfill the duties of the office of council member during the term of your office according to the best of your ability? So help you God.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's it. You can sit down. Counselor-elect Rosalyn Grafstein, would you please come to be sworn in?
Rosalyn, if you'll raise your right hand for me, please. And do you, Rosalyn Grafstein, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Madison Heights, that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the City of Madison Heights, free from partisan control, and that you will faithfully fulfill the duties of the office of counselor during the time of your office according to the best of your ability? So help you God.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Again, I'd like to thank Judge Hunt for helping us this evening. Thank you, sir. Welcome to the team, Ms. Grafstein. Thank you to the other council members for serving and continuing to serve. If the clerk is ready, can we have roll call of the new city council?
Councilman Bliss?
Here.
Councilman Corbett?
Here.
Councilman Geddings?
Here.
Counselor Grafstein?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilman Saltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
Yes, I'm here. The first order of business is election of Mayor Pro Tem. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, it's a real pleasure to nominate Mark Bliss to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for the 32nd council.
Thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to appoint Mark Bliss as the Mayor Pro Tem for the 32nd city council. Is there any discussion? Thank you, Mark, for serving again. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
The motion carries. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? All right, hearing none. Thank you for joining us, everyone. We're going to take a brief recess, about 10 minutes. Because we have about an hour of work tonight, some of you may not want to sit through the sausage-making of local government. So the families of any council member or whoever's here, feel free to stand up and feel free to leave after a couple minutes of photos. So we're going to time out, and we'll do a recess starting now.[1374.91][1374.91](pause) Counselor-elect Rosalyn Grafstein, would you please come to be sworn in?
I do have a question. You're probably not prepared for this, but you probably know the answer. Are there any other four-story structures in the nearby area near the expressway and 14 Mile Road, including the hotels that are already there?
I'm fairly confident that two of the hotels in that area are four stories, I believe. I'm going off that memory there. Don't quote me on that.
Yeah, that's okay. How many stories are in the Hampton Inn? Is it three?
I can check Google Earth real quick, but...
That's okay.
Okay.
I'm just curious to see about the four stories.
Yeah. I'm going off memory, but they're definitely three or four stories, both of them.
Okay. All right.
Any other discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm curious about how many hotels do we have in the city now? Do we know?
Six or seven.
I don't know that. Figure out the top of my head.
Yeah. I kind of agree with the two hotel managers that...I don't know. It seems to me like we don't necessarily need another hotel. We've had a bunch of problems in all these hotels. You know, our FBI task force is doing a good job of cleaning them up, but it just seems to me, I don't know why we put another hotel in. Yeah, I know.
Well, I mean, with any hope, the bad hotels will fail. The ones that are welcoming to crime, and this hotel, new, expensive, we may push out some of that.
Yeah.
With the continued work of the FBI Violent Crimes Task Force. It's a fair comment, though. Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I pose a question for Councilman Saltis?
Yes, I'll allow it.
Are you concerned the fact that it could tax the police even further?
Boy, yeah, definitely. But I'm concerned about, because we have an infestation of crime in hotels, north end, south end, and I'd just hate to see another one go up. I mean, some of the nicer ones still had problems in them, so...
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other discussion from council?
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I appreciate the development and the investment in the community, and I know, you know, in my experience in the private sector, newer hotels attract businesses who have out-of-town investors and out-of-town workers and VPs, et cetera. And so having a new development like this, a brand-new hotel, would be a draw for other investments. Yes, we do have other hotels, but it seems like they've done...you know, this is a sizable investment, so they had to have done their due diligence to find out what the demand would be, and they're fairly confident that there's demand for a brand-new hotel at that site, so I'm in favor of this.
Other discussion? All right, let's vote.
Do we have a roll call?
Yeah, we'll do a roll call, vote. All in favor will say aye or yes. All opposed would say no.
Okay.
Let's begin.
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Counselor Grafstein? Are there any other four-story structures in the nearby area near the expressway and 14 Mile Road, including the hotels that are already there?
I'm fairly confident that two of the hotels in that area are four stories, I believe. I'm going off of that memory there. Don't quote me on that.
Yeah, that's okay. How many stories are in the Hampton Inn? Is it three?
I can check Google Earth real quick, but...
That's okay. I'm just curious to see about the four stories.
Yeah, I'm going off memory, but they're definitely three or four stories, both of them.
Okay, all right.
Any other discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm curious about, how many hotels do we have in the city now? Do we know?
I don't know that.
Yeah, I kind of agree with the two hotel managers that, I don't know, it seems to me like we don't necessarily need another hotel. We've had a bunch of problems in all these hotels. You know, our FBI task force is doing a good job of cleaning them up, but it just seems to me, I don't know why we'd put another hotel in. Yeah, I know.
Well, I mean, with any hope, the bad hotels will fail. The ones that are welcoming to crime, and this hotel, new, expensive, may push out some of that.
Yeah.
With the continued work of the FBI Violent Crimes Task Force. It's a fair comment, though. Any other comments from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
May I pose a question for Councilman Soltis?
Yes, I'll allow it.
Are you concerned the fact that it could tax the police even further?
Oh, yeah, definitely. But I'm concerned about, because we have an infestation of crime in hotels, north end, south end, and I'd just hate to see another one go up. I mean, some of the nicer ones still had problems in them, so...
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other discussion from council?
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I appreciate the development and the investment in the community, and I know, you know, in my experience in the private sector, newer hotels attract businesses who have out-of-town investors and out-of-town workers and VPs, et cetera. And so, having a new development like this, a brand-new hotel, would be a draw for other investments. Yes, we do have other hotels, but it seems like they've done, you know, this is a sizable investment, so they had to have done their due diligence to find out what the demand would be, and they're fairly confident in their demand for a brand-new hotel at that site, so I'm in favor of this.
Other discussion? All right, let's vote.
Do we have a roll call?
Yeah, we'll do a roll call vote. All in favor will say aye or yes. All opposed would say no.
Okay.
Let's begin.
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Grabstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
No.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. It passes six to one. All right, we'll go to the next item on our agenda. It's A2, special approval 1705 regarding used car sales on 14 Mile. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. A special approval has been requested at 436 East 14 Mile to allow used car dealership in the M1 district. The owner of the existing auto repair facility is proposing to use the existing facility for used car sales as well. The building will continue to be used for auto repairs as well as for the sales activity that was noted on their floor plan. In June of 2014, the applicant previously sought and was granted special approval for used car sales at 456 East 14 and the vacant lot associated with this application, and that's the building east of the subject property. That approval was not acted on by the applicant, and the approval has lapsed. Regarding the current application, the parking meets minimum ordinance requirements. The proposed hours of operation are from Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The Site Plan Review Committee has reviewed the plan, and all plan review comments have been addressed. Should city council approve this request, the Site Plan Review Committee recommends that it be conditioned upon the used vehicle display only being in the five designated sales spaces per the site plan.
All right, we'll do a public hearing before we hear from city council. I open the public hearing on special approval 1705 regarding used cars, used car sales at 436 East 14 Mile. Would anyone like to address city council? The public hearing is open. Welcome. Good evening, sir. It'd be helpful if you gave your name and affiliation, but it's not required.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bill Nellou, and I'm president of Interstate Auto Care at 526 East 14 Mile, two buildings away from this proposal. I'd be remiss to say, before I begin, just want to congratulate new council member along with the returning ones. As a business owner in the community for over 17 years, I can't tell you how proud I am to be part of this community, so I thank you very much. You guys are just top-notch across the board. This has been a wonderful city. I expect to be here another 17 years, I think. So having said that, the reason I'm here today is because I'm a little concerned with the 14 Mile corridor, and frankly, I don't think we need another used car lot. We have one of the biggest car lot franchises in the country called CarRight, and they're having some trouble. If you look at the parking lot, the parking lot is emptier than it ever has been before. Things are a little slower. I mean, there's cars out there, there are leasing cars for $100 a month. The leasing business has dried up the used car market. And so, the reason I'm here is because frankly, wherever you find cities that have used car lots, you can pretty much bet that you're going to have, you know, payday loans and liquor stores, and frankly, I don't want to see 14 Mile turn into, you know, to another Eight Mile or another Telegraph Road or Grashit and Eight Mile Road or what have you. And so, I would prefer the corridor become a little bit, you know, perhaps there's better use for those two spots. I've been, you know, in my 17 years, the building next to us, directly to the west of my building, has sat vacant for the better part of probably 10 to 12 years. And so, those two lots, I suspect, are underutilized currently and probably has a better use than a used car lot. There was a used car lot that was just approved that was a former restaurant. If you'll help me, I don't know what the name of the restaurant was, but it still looks like a restaurant, and yet they're selling cars out of the back. I just, I don't think that's, if that's what you sort of knew what you were signing off at, on, I suppose, then we may be setting a precedent. But I don't, I just don't want to see 14 Mile turn into streamers and $49 down and $59 a month for the next 10 years. And I hope you'd agree with that. I think there's a reason why the Troy side doesn't have used car lots, and I wish Madison Heights would sort of take that on, and let's keep it more retail. I'd rather not see another used car lot pop up. I think it was Matthews-Hargraves is currently, they had a temporary permit to house some vehicles in the parking lot next to the bank. And now, they're brand-new cars, that's fine, but it just doesn't, to me, it's just not becoming of a city that is vibrant in retail space and what have you. I don't think it invites the next retail shopping center to go in when they see all of that stuff.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your comments.
Have a good evening.
The public hearing is still open on the special approval. Good evening.
Good morning. Good evening. This is Mary Bush, 1117 East Hudson. These two issues, and particularly, I will address this one, raise a very interesting point about where Madison Heights can go. In consideration of these types of new businesses, how much does the city council look at urban planning and development for sustainable growth and business? What do we do to attract, in our forecasted 20-year plan, the kind of businesses that we want to have, drive off unprofitable or undesirable businesses and attract those that we do want? And I have no comment about this particular business, but I do invite you to consider the decision that you're making and how it fits into what should be well-market researched and scientifically based, not God-it-doesn't-feel-right decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council during this public hearing? All right, no one's asked to be recognized. I'll close the public hearing. What's the wish of city council? Any motions on this special approval?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
To get on the table here, I'll move to grant special approval for use of a used car lot at 436 East 14 Mile Road, and I would adopt by reference the conditions of the Plan Review Committee, including that the vehicle display be only five in the designated spaces per the site plan.
Thank you. Is there support? Support for the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
I'll support for discussion.
All right, thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve, to grant special approval number 1705 to allow used car sales at 436 East 14 Mile, subject to the conditions of the review committee. Any discussion on this item?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I'm not sure if the owners in the audience, I believe they are, but I'd like to understand why five spaces, five cars being highlighted. How is that number picked?
Mr. Schaefer, do you have an answer?
Mr. Mayor, council, the number of vehicle spaces for display is backed into after you calculate the required parking for customers on the site. So he has an existing auto repair facility, and the number of bays and the size of that facility drives a specific number of parking spaces that has to be provided for the site, and then the remaining spaces that are available are available for display of used cars.
This may be an obvious question. How many cars can fit into the five designated sale spaces? Five?
Five.
Okay. And then, I've seen car lots who have restrictions on how many cars they can be for sale. They just take the "for sale" sign off, and suddenly, oh, the car's not for sale. Is there a way to prevent that? I mean, they could have 20 cars on their lot, but there's no "for sale" sign on them? I mean, have you seen gamemanship like that?
Mr. Mayor, that's the reason for the condition, because that, of course, does occur, but the code requirements for the parking trump the display spaces. The parking demand is not being generated by the used car sales activity. The parking demand for the site is being generated by the existing building itself and the range of uses in it. And so, just to kind of reiterate, you back into the available spaces after you've provided for all of the required parking spaces on the site. And that condition, should council approve this, that condition would allow us to be able to monitor, and should the site become filled with used cars, plated or not, we would be able to monitor that and assess that.
Any other discussion from city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
So this is a, this is not a used car dealership that just happens to do repairs. It's a repair shop that just happens to sell a few used cars.
Well, Mr. Mayor, council, I would not characterize it, but if the owner is in the audience, if he wishes to tell you his business model, but he does have special approval to operate a auto repair facility, entire repair facility, and then this is being added to that operation.
Mr. Max?
Yes, Mr. Soltis.
Jim, can you tell me? Oh, sir, hi. The public hearing's over. What would you like to do?
I'm the owner.
Oh, hi. Okay, well, I'll reopen the public hearing to give you an opportunity to, if you want to say something, please.
Okay. Well, how you guys doing?
Good evening.
My name is Baldia.
Hi, sir.
And I came to the city on January 1st of 2000. I had a building on 32822 John R. right next to the Toys R Us. That was on January 2000. It was a closed building. Nobody wanted to operate it. I leased it for 10 years, and during that time I'm leasing, I purchased another building down on John R. between 12 and 11. The address is 27795. It was one of the, wasn't a good building in the city. It's one of the nicest one down the street now, and I, at the same time, I'm leasing the building on 3282. I purchased the building on 436 East 14 Mile. It used to be Troy Auto Care in there, and I made it as nice as it is. Then, just a year and a half ago, I purchased the building next door to me to make it a used car lot, and things didn't go as the plan that I planned, and I was approved for that building a year or a few months ago, a year and a few months ago, for a used car dealer. And I've been trying my best to do whatever and pay my taxes and pay everything that I was supposed to do from the day that I came to the city, and making it look like Eight Mile or whatever. If you go after every building that I own and everyone that I got in it, I made it the best as it can be. So doing the, adding that little business into my existing business, this is just so I can generate a little extra money. That's basically it, and we're just, you know, improving it and improving 14 Mile instead of making it look like Eight Mile, like the gentleman next door to me, he said. But that's basically it, you know, trying to do something good.
Well, thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Schaefer. You can have a seat. You can relax. Mr. Schaefer, what are the adjacent properties to the east, west, and south? Do you know the use?
The zoning in that, the existing land use in that area is industrial to the south and to the west, and to the east, it is commercial.
So industrial on the west and south and commercial to the east?
Correct.
Any other discussion? We'll see. I'll close that public hearing. We'll back with city council. Any other comments from city council on the motion to grant special approval?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Just a question to the location of the five parking spaces. I'm looking at a map right now. Is that, that's toward the front of the building?
Mr. Mayor, council, if you look at sheet A20, you will see in the middle of the two buildings, there are five north-south facing parking spaces right out off the green belt from 14 Mile, and it's those front five spaces that would be the display spaces. The remaining parking spaces on the plan are all for customer parking.
I had a question, Mr. Schaefer, about the choice for the barrier between the properties. Was it eight-inch blocks? I guess it's not the nicest barrier. I mean, is there a reason for that choice, or is there a code on walls and barriers between properties?
Mr. Mayor, there is no code that would prohibit or prevent them. The owner of this property does own all three parcels, the two buildings, as well as the vacant property in between, so that would be his preference from a design standpoint on whether or not he wanted to have a combined driveway there. He certainly could. Our code encourages it, and he would not be required to go through any additional review procedures or anything like that. If he wished to combine those driveways, he certainly could.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I could ask, Mr. Schaefer, what building is to the west of that proposed site?
The...
It's a large building.
Yeah, that is tool and die, right? Yeah, it's a small industrial manufacturing, tool and, tool manufacturing.
And could you repeat what's on the east, because I couldn't hear you?
The east side of the actual used car lot, right now, the lot itself is vacant, and there is a small vacant building, and then the gentleman who spoke earlier, his automotive repair facility is the next building over.
I'm sorry, can you say that again, please?
You have a vacant, you have a vacant commercial building, then you have the automotive repair facility.
Okay, thank you.
So it's surrounded by industrial on two sides, and then the third site is actually currently owned by the applicant in this case?
That is correct.
All right. Were there requirements or discussions on landscaping?
Yes, this site, they chose because it's such a small parcel. We actually loaded all of the landscaping required up front on 14 Mile, so what you'll see, instead of the minimum five-foot-wide green belt per the standard, you actually have a 15-foot green belt. What we did is we added to it so that the maximum amount of green space was on 14 Mile. It's a very small parcel, and so the requirements were not substantial, so we worked with the designers for the applicant to get that greenery up on 14 Mile where it would be most noticed.
I was too slow to listen. You said the standard green belt is five feet, but this site will be 15 feet?
Correct.
Discussion from council?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Could you tell me if there have been any violations to the codes that this gentleman has in his businesses that he has owned?
The current operation?
Yeah, all of them.
Oh, I don't have the record sitting in front of me, but I know there have been the occasional issues with tire storage, I know has come up, things of that nature, temporary signage.
All right. So nothing crucial, nothing really? He's been cooperative, in other words, to the city codes?
I don't believe there's anything pending from a code enforcement standpoint.
Okay, that's what I was questioning. Okay.
Any other discussion from city council? All right, let's vote. Let's do a roll call vote, please. Will the clerk take the vote? If you vote to grant special approval for used car sales, your vote will be yes or aye. If you oppose it, you'll vote no. Ms. Clerk?
Okay. Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Grabstein?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
Yes.
And Mayor Hartwell?
I vote yes. It passes seven to zero. We'll continue on to communications under the agenda, and we have three tonight. The first communication, C1, is from Alyssa Botrow regarding...
...the meeting.
Oh. All right, fine. Before we go to communications, we'll do meeting open to the public. Would anyone like to address city council on any subject? If you do, please come to the podium now. It'd be helpful, but it's not required if you could give your name and address. And limit your comments to three minutes. And limit your comments to three minutes or less. Meeting is open to the public.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here on behalf of the Madison's Parade. First of all, I'm speaking on behalf of the committee, and I would like to introduce you a few of them. I don't heard the other ones along the way, they must've got lost. But anyway, I want to thank everybody, the City Council, the city, and Gary McGilbury, and I want to thank everyone of you, all your city workers, and words cannot describe how happy we are that we'll be able to maybe get more people involved in the parade, and we want to thank you from the bottom of our heart that you're devoting your time to the parade on parade day. Thank you, and God bless all of you.
Thank you, good evening.
Hello, Mary Bush again, 1117 East Hudson. Congratulations to the new and returning council members. Several issues became apparent during this election and the past year. Number one, people want to participate with this newly energized City Council. They like the progress that they're seeing with ITAC, Culture and Arts, et cetera. Number two, many people don't know how the city works and understand how they can get their issues addressed in an effective and timely manner. Number three, many people want to be a more significant part of the city goal-setting and planning process. To help address these needs, I asked, and Emily Rohrbach has agreed, to do a series of educational seminars for our residents. They will include understanding the city manager, mayor, and city council partnership, authorities, and accountabilities, understanding how the council stays informed about the needs and issues of the residents as circumstances change over time, what role do the citizen advisory boards play, and how we can make the boards more empowered to advise and inform the council of the wishes of the citizen for the fiscal year goals and goal-setting and planning, training and energizing citizen advocates, training and setting smart goals, establishing neighborhood groups, sourcing funding, and community resources. We would like the city to partner with this team that we have established to accomplish this, to provide logistical support, council and city management advice and guidance, and partner to hold a board fair by June of 2018. We'd like a chance to meet and greet all of the board members, to set expectations for advisory boards, and receive new applications for board members. Our goal is to have this so that the boards can be more participatory in helping the council set the fiscal year 2019 goals. In preparation, we invite the council and the mayor to review the nature and activities of all the boards and commissions, to decommission those that are inactive or whose mission could be merged with another board. We invite the council and mayor to use the Parks and Rec Board as an example of what is really working. I request that upon completion of this, that each city council member do a quarterly report of activities based on the notion of continuous improvement at a, as a regularly scheduled agenda item for these city council meetings. I will be sending a copy of these remarks to the city manager and mayor to distribute to council members. They are also already posted on Facebook. I would like to hear the thoughts of the council on this at the next scheduled council meeting as an agenda item, and whether y'all agree to participate as a partner with this citizen-led action plan. Thank you. Item number two. Speaking of advisory boards, right now, there is a city-school liaison commission consisting of Mr. Myers, Mr. Bliss, Mr. Soltis, and Mr. Geddings. All seats for the Lampfire are vacant, and Madison District Public Schools isn't even listed as participatory. Recently, the Madison District asked for a millage for school improvements, part of which was to develop the Sunset Park area, and it was thoroughly and soundly defeated. As a result, I'm working with superintendent Spack and select school board members with the intention of raising private money to transform the park and the adjacent playground per the school vision, and equipment for adults and seniors. I invite the city to participate as we have a vested interest in the development of that property. Should Madison District ever shutter the Madison Prep High School and Early Childhood Center, that Sunset Park area will revert back to the city. Please notify me by email which of you would like to be on the planning committee. I would also request a representative of the Parks and Rec Board. Our first meeting is scheduled for the second Sunday of Saturday of January, that's January 13th, at 10:00 a.m. at the library. So, those are my two items, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the three new council members, or re-elected council members, as well as yourself as mayor. But most of all, I want to make sure I recognize Rich Clark. Rich Clark and I served together for many years on City Council. If you, if you have any idea of the elected officials sitting here, Rich and myself, the amount of time that goes into it. You have to go to different groups all around the city, the campaigning, the meetings, and so on. He's spent a lot of time for the community of Madison Heights, and he's done a fine job, so I want to thank him once again. As your county commissioner, I'm here to let you know about a couple programs that I've worked hard on to try to get additional money for local roads. We were able to add another half million dollars to the local roads. That serves all the cities around the county. You have a formula, so you have a portion of what can be done, but as I've stated before, in the past, all we had was what we called tri-party money, and that was good for county roads only, which would be in Madison Heights, for example, 10, 12, and 14 Mile. So, you still have John R., Dequinder, Campbell, Stevenson, that are local roads that had to be paid for by the city. And during the financial crunch, we, we added extra money just from the county and then matched by your local contribution to be able to do some smaller road projects. So, we've, we've upped that half a million dollars a year, and I hate to say, but it's going to go away in a couple of years, so take advantage of it. And the last thing I wanted to mention is we have a new program that we're just starting. We're trying to replace, because of the problems up in Flint and the lead in the water and so forth, we want to make sure that the drinking water in all of our schools are safe. A lot of our schools are older buildings that have lead pipes and things like that. So, we've come up with a half a million dollars to buy new drinking fountains for schools all over Oakland County. The problem is, is we're not getting a lot of applicants at this point, because the way we did it was, we put up the 500,000 to buy the fountain itself, which, by the way, is a fountain that you can fill bottles with, too. And the school districts haven't responded real well, because they have to pay for the installation of those on their own, but it gets rid of the possibility of lead. So, that was our purpose behind doing it, so that we don't become another Flint some year, some way down the road. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you. The meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to address any subject? All right, no one else has asked to be recognized, so we'll close meeting open to the public, and we'll go to Communications, C1. Can I have a motion regarding the resignation of Alyssa Botrell?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council accept the resignation of Alyssa Botrell from the Library Advisory Historic and Environmental Citizens Committee. Is that correct, Environmental Citizens Committee? She was on that?
Yes.
I just, it's been inactive for so long, I remember seeing anybody of Alyssa. Okay, from those three committees, declare the seat vacant and prepare a nice resolution for her, sir.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to accept the resignation of Alyssa Botrell from the Library Board, Historical Commission, and the Environmental Committee. Declare those seats vacant and issue a proclamation of thanks. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Can I please have a motion regarding the resignation of Anthony Botrell?
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I move that we accept the resignation of Anthony Botrell from the Information Technology Advisory Committee, declare the seat vacant, and issue the appropriate proclamation.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to accept the resignation of Anthony Botrell from the ITAC. Is there any discussion? Declaring the seat vacant and issuing a proclamation of thanks. Any discussion? All right, we'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Could I please have a motion regarding the resignation of Mr. Klaus?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council accept the resignation of Joshua Klaus as a member of the Library Advisory Board and the Crime Commission, that those seats be declared vacant, and that a resolution of appreciation be issued.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to accept the resignation of Joshua Klaus from the Library Board and Crime Commission, declaring those seats vacant, and issuing a proclamation of thanks. Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next on the agenda are reports. We'll go to D1 regarding the My Life Health and Wellness Center. Mr. Myers, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Your Honor. In 2014, City Council approved an interlocal agreement between the cities of Madison Heights, Royal Oak, and Ferndale to establish the My Life Health and Wellness Center for eligible employees and, city employees and dependents. Since that time, we have been working to attract additional partners, both private companies and other municipalities, to join our collaborative in order to offer a wider range of hours and services to our respective workforces. Last year, we were approached by the city of Ferndale regarding a possible expansion of the current My Life Center to include part-time hours at a second location and two more municipalities, Hazel Park and Oak Park. After much work by all of the parties, I am pleased to announce that this is coming to a reality. A second center has been proposed in Ferndale at the current Fern Care Clinic site located at 751 East Nine Mile Road in Ferndale. This clinic will house the My Life Center only on the days the current center is closed, 7 to 11 a.m. Tuesday and Friday. The cities are hopeful that this expansion will lead to the continued success of the center and increased employee utilization of more available hours, also resulting in lower employer healthcare costs. With this addition, the My Life Center will be open for employee ineligible dependent use every day, Monday through Friday. Presented for council is the Second Amendment to the interlocal agreement, which includes the two additional cities and addresses the new location site. Since Madison Heights is part of the My Life Group, we are also required to approve a sublease agreement with Fern Care for use of their current site. Royal Oak and Madison Heights have not committed to cost-sharing in the Ferndale location. However, Oak Park, Hazel Park, and Ferndale will allow both Royal Oak and Madison Heights to use the Ferndale location for up to one year to assess whether there is added value to our cities. Hazel Park and Oak Park have already approved the agreements, which have also been reviewed and approved by the city's legal team. Accordingly, staff and I recommend that council approve the My Life Health and Wellness Center, Second Amendment to the interlocal agreement, and the sublease with Fern Care, as well as authorize the city manager to sign both agreements.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I move for council to approve the My Life Health and Wellness Center, Second Amendment to the interlocal agreement, and the sublease with Fern Care, as well as authorize the city manager to sign both agreements.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Second, please.
Okay, second. A motion was made by Councilman, Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Soltis, to approve the Second Amendment to the interlocal agreement for the My Life Health and Wellness Center, and the sublease agreement with Fern Care, and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city. I'll begin discussion by saying, I, I'm very pleased that other cities are following our footsteps. I mean, this really is a win-win-win. It's, I mean, from the employee's perspective, we, the employers, are providing them onsite healthcare professionals to take care of all their, their regular wellness checks. It, you know, keeps them healthy, keeps them productive, and it's, you know, as an employer, we want that. We want healthy, satisfied, productive employees. We also happen to save money if we catch illnesses sooner. So, it really is a fantastic program, and it took Hazel Park a while to get on board, but I knew they'd eventually get on board. It's really exciting that Oak Park is joining us. My one question was, I thought, I thought we were going to penalize the latecomers. You know, we were the first ones with this great idea, and if anyone wanted to join us later, there'd be a penalty, because we put in the investment of the upfront costs. How was that negotiated or balanced this time around?
There is a buy-in fee for communities that wanted to join after, however, that was waived in the second interlocal, because Hazel Park and Oak Park are paying all of the cost to get the Fern Care Center up to where it should be, and those costs exceeded the $7,500 that would have been the buy-in cost, so it actually worked out to benefit the My Life Center to not have them actually pay. But you were correct, there was a buy-in fee that would be distributed back to the original cities for all of our efforts.
And, Your Honor, there's, there's also that section on additional employers that applies to our current My Life Center that would have applied had, had Hazel Park or another city, for example, wanted to join our center downstairs at a later date.
Okay, thanks. Other discussion from City Council? All right, no discussion. We'll go to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next report is D2, also from the deputy city manager. It's the budget amendments for fiscal year 2017 to 18. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor. On May 22 of this year, council approved the fiscal 2017, 2018, and 2019 Water Meter Replacement Program, purchase of meters, register heads, and transmitters for unit costs in a total estimated amount of $1,783,529.50 through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract, and the installation, cross-connection inspection, and software upgrades by the sole qualified bidder, Ferguson Water Works, in the estimated amount of $894,677.50, both of those representing a total project cost of $2,678,207. The council motion also included that District 3 funding is contingent upon fiscal year 2019, that's next year's budget approval. The DPS Director has reported that installation is going well in District 1 and 2, and the department will be ready to tackle District 3 this fiscal year, which is sooner than originally planned. The city's vendor, Ferguson Water Works, is offering a discount of $22,855 on meter purchases for District 3 if the meters are purchased this calendar year. This budget amendment is being requested outside our normal budget amendment cycle in order to take advantage of the vendor discount and expedite the water meter replacement program. Staff and I recommend that city council approve a budget amendment outside our normal cycle in the amount of $952,200 to the water and sewer capital outlay account and the water and sewer fund use of fund balance. And I would note that a five-vote supermajority is required, as this action is an appropriation of funds.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that the council approve an amendment to the FY 1718 budget dedicated to the water and sewer fund, as detailed, but specifically in the amount of $952,200 to the water and sewer capital outlay account.
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to approve the amendments to the 201718 fiscal year budget for the water and sewer fund, as detailed in the staff report, in the amount of $952,200 for the water and sewer capital outlay account, and water and sewer fund use of fund balance. Any discussion from City Council?
Your Honor?
Yes?
I, it was referenced how the meter replacements have been going, so could we potentially get a staff update on that?
Your Honor, Mr. Vitale is, is here this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Vitale, Jr.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. In terms of a staffed update on how the water meter changeout program is going, we are getting pretty close to wrapping up District 1. We do have some loose ends, and we're about 95% complete. And just for the benefit of the audience, District 1 are the residential homes south of 11 Mile. We are currently in District 2, between 11 Mile and 12 Mile. We're at about 20% complete in that district. The installers are getting anywhere from 50 to 75 meters installed on a daily basis, and they have eight installers working, so as you can imagine, you're seeing quite a number of meters get installed on a weekly basis. In essence, we're getting closer to District 3 a lot more, a lot sooner than we anticipated, and hence the request to move into District 3 here. and hence the request to move into District III here.
Mr. Vitale, Jr., is the contractor finding resistance to get into the homes to physically replace the meters?
Your Honor, only on the rare occasion we've had some scheduling conflicts or people want to take care of some things prior to us getting in the home, but all in all, when you look at 9,500 residential homes having to be entered, it hasn't been really an issue whatsoever.
Any other questions for Mr. Bliss or discussion from Council? All right, no other discussion from Council. Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries, 7-0. All right, there's nothing under Item E tonight, so we'll go to Item F1, a bid award or purchase from the DPS Director, replacement van in water and sewer. Ms. Myers?
Yes, Your Honor, our current year budget includes $60,000 in funding for the replacement of one of our water and sewer vans, number 458. Staff and I recommend that council approve the purchase of one Ram ProMaster utility van with the options identified to Jim Reels of LaPierre. This is through the Oakland County Cooperative Bid for a cost of $32,432, and approve the van's upfitting to Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc., and this is through the City of Rochester Hills Cooperative Purchasing Agreement for a cost of $18,060, and funds our budget available for this total purchase of $50,492.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council? Will anyone make the motion to approve the purchase of one Ram ProMaster utility van with options to Jim Reels of LaPierre and approve the van upfitting to Truck and Trailer Specialties, Inc., for a total purchase of $50,492?
Mr. Mayor?
So moved, Mr. Giddings?
So moved.
Is there a second for the motion?
Support, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. Any discussion on this item? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item G on the agenda is ordinances. There's nothing for discussion tonight. Item H, unfinished business, there is none. So, let's see, we have appointments to boards and commissioners, boards and commissions, not the council appointments, but just the general public. Council, we need to reappoint Ben Myers to the Planning Commission. So would someone make that motion to reappoint Ben Myers to Planning Commission, city manager, for a term expiring November 2019?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
We also have the DDA one. I can take that in one motion, right?
Okay, yeah, if you want to lump Mr. Myers' appointment to Planning, DDA, and Brownfield.
Your Honor, I move that we reappoint Ben Myers to DDA, Brownfield, and Planning with a term that expires 11/11/19.
Thank you. Is there a second on the motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Bliss, seconded by Mrs. Scott, to reappoint city manager Ben Myers to the Downtown Development Authority, the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, and the Planning Commission for terms expiring 11/11/19. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. All right, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
When you get to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, I'd like to say something before we start, please, when we get down to that portion of the agenda.
Could we wait until discussion if there's a motion? I'd rather have a motion on the floor before discussion starts.
No, I just wanted to say something myself, if possible, not about an appointment, but instead of saying it now, I'd rather say it then.
Mr. Giddings, I'll give you an opportunity to discuss after a motion's on the floor, or you got closing comments, you can take all the time you want.
Okay.
At the end of the meeting.
Thank you.
All right, any other appointments to, for the general public onto our boards and commissions? All right, there's none tonight. All right, so we have, to the public, we, council has a lot of administrative work right now. We're going to try to march through this, but the members of your city council, we serve individually on the boards and commissions of this city, and so we have to reappoint our positions on each of these boards. It's a lot of work. Eighteen, eighteen appoint, at least eighteen boards are here. Some of them have multiple appointments. So for council, I'm not going to restate the motion, I'm just going to ask, after the motion and second, I'm just going to ask for discussion, then we'll vote. It'll just save 30 seconds each time, okay? So let's begin. Under the agenda of council appointments, number one, Arts and Cultural Advisory Board. Nominations, please.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Mark Bliss. Is that right?
To the Arts and Culture Board?
To the Arts and Culture Board.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Your Honor, just as a clarification for the council representative spot, right?
Yes, for the council representative spot.
Yes, all right, okay. Maybe for these double ones, I will clarify the motion, how about that? All right, any discussion to appoint Mr. Bliss as the council rep to the Arts and Culture Board? Any discussion? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Can I have a motion regarding the alternate to the Arts Board?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we appoint Councilwoman Scott as the council alternate to the Arts and Culture Advisory Board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Giddings?
Second.
Any discussion on appointing Mrs. Scott as the alternate to the Arts and Culture Board? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next board is the Charter Amendment Commission. Any nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I would like to nominate Robert Giddings for the Charter Amendment and Organics Revision Commission as the council rep.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second that.
Thank you, Ms. Grafstein. Any discussion on this nomination?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Can I please have nominations to the City School Liaison Committee?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we nominate Councilor Grafstein and Councilman Soltis to the City School Liaison Committee as council representatives.
Thank you. Is there support for these nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Any discussion on nominating Councilor Grafstein and Councilman Soltis as the representatives to the City School Liaison Committee? Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. A motion for the alternate seat on that same board?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
I would like to nominate Robert Giddings for the council alternate to the City School Liaison Committee.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to support that.
Thank you, Ms. Grafstein. Any discussion on appointing Councilman Giddings as the alternate to the City School Liaison Committee? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next board is the Crime Commission. Any motion? Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Council, no, Councilor?
Counselor.
Counselor Grafstein for the council representative on the Crime Commission.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Any discussion on putting Councilor Grafstein on the Crime Commission? All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Nominations to the Election Commission. It cannot be a council member who could potentially be running for office in two years.
Well, I'm not prepared to make an announcement considering you all just got here, but, so you probably should look at one of the new ones.
One of the new guys?
Yeah.
Mr. Soltis, do you want to make a nomination for someone to the Election Commission?
Who drew the charter?
Someone put their hand up.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear what was being said over there.
Well, no, no council member running for office in two years can be a member of the current Election Commission.
So I would like to nominate David Soltis, Councilman David Soltis, for that position on the Election Commission.
Okay, thanks. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second that.
Ms. Grafstein, thank you. Any discussion on appointing Councilman Soltis to the Election Commission? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Can I have a nomination to the Environmental Citizens Committee?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate, again, Councilor Grafstein for Environmental Citizens Committee Rep, Council Rep.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Any discussion on appointing Grafstein to the Environmental Citizens Committee? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Nominations for the Friends of Madison Heights Youth?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Scott for Friends of Madison Heights Youth Council Representative.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Any discussion on appointing Ms. Scott to Friends of Madison Heights Youth as the rep? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Can I have a motion for the alternate seat to Friends of Madison Heights Youth?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Move to appoint Mr. Bliss, Mayor Protem Bliss, sorry, as the alternate to that board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to support that.
Thank you, Councilor Grafstein. Any discussion on appointing Mayor Protem Bliss as the alternate to Friends of Madison Heights Youth? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Nomination for the Historical Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to appoint Margine Scott.
Thank you, Councilor Grafstein. Is there a second?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
I second.
Any discussion on appointing Scott to the Historical Commission? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Movements for ITAC?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Move to appoint Mayor Protem Bliss as the council delegate to the ITAC Committee.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Second, please.
Any discussion on appointing Bliss as the council delegate to ITAC? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. A motion for the alternate seat, please?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we appoint Councilman Corbett as the council alternate on ITAC.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Second.
Oh, great, thank you. Any discussion on appointing Mr. Corbett as the alternate to ITAC? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Can I have motions for the Library Board? Please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I nominate Councilman Corbett, oh, excuse me, yes, Councilman Corbett for the council representative.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
Thank you, Ms. Grafstein. Is there discussion on appointing Mr. Corbett as the council rep to the Library Advisory Board? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. The motion carries. The alternate seat, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to reappoint Mr. Bliss as the council alternate to the Library Advisory Board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ms. Scott? Thank you. Any discussion on appointing Mayor Protem Bliss as the council alternate to the Library Board? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Can I have a motion regarding the seat on the Community Coalition?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to reappoint Margine Scott to the Community Coalition.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Second, please.
Any discussion on appointing Scott to the, as the council rep to Community Coalition? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Appointments for the Multicultural Board, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Move to reappoint David Soltis as the council representative to the Multicultural Relations Advisory Board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Any discussion on appointing Soltis as the council rep to the Multicultural Relations Board? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The alternate seat, please?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering if, I'd like to nominate Councilman Giddings as the alternate on the Multicultural Relations Advisory Board.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on appointing Councilman Giddings as the council alternate to the Multicultural Board? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Can I please have nominations for the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we reappoint Councilman Corbett as the council representative on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Soltis?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on appointing Corbett as the council representative to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board? All right, hearing no discussion, we'll vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Can I have a nomination for the council alternate, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move to reappoint Mark Bliss as the alternate to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you, is there a second? A second for the nomination?
I would like to second that.
Okay, thank you very well.
You just got very unpopular.
How dare you. Okay, a motion was made to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Mark Bliss as the Council Alternate to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. The motion carries. Alright, the Planning Commission is by Mayor's appointment. So would Council accept the Mayor's appointment of Mark Bliss as the Council Rep to the Planning Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
I move that the Council confirm the Mayor's appointment of Mayor Pro Tem Bliss as a representative from the Council of the Planning Commission.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scott.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on appointing Bliss as the Council Rep? Confirming the Mayor's appointment to the Planning Commission? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed say no. Motion carries. Uh, next, a motion for the Senior Advisory Board?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Councilwoman Scott for Council Representative.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Support.
Thank you, any discussion on appointing Councilwoman Scott as the Council Rep to the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no.
Your Honor?
I'm sorry, was that a no vote?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, the motion carries, 7-0, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion because I think, I noticed that the Senior Advisory Board does not have an alternate. So tonight I'd like to make a motion that we add an alternate to the Senior Advisory Board.
That may take an amendment of the actual ordinance.
I don't, yeah, Your Honor, the Senior Advisory Board is one of our boards that was set up by council motion and not by ordinance.
Oh.
So by resolution, Council could amend the structure to add the alternate position. Uh, and it would have the same term expiration date as the representative. But that would take a separate council motion and vote to establish the position.
I would just suggest we take it as a request to staff that what's the quickest way to amend it and bring it forward and voila.
I'd prefer that, I don't have a problem with it in general, but I'd prefer to not move on that motion. Will you withdraw your motion?
Well. Ben, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, just that if Council wishes to do that, a simple majority vote would accomplish that tonight, adding the position.
So can we just, sorry, Mr. Mayor, can we just vote on this now?
Alright, so restate your motion.
I just want to make a motion to add an alternate position for the Senior Advisory Board, Council Representative.
Is there a second to this motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second that motion.
Alright, a motion was made by Councilman Soltis, seconded by Counselor Graffstein, to add a Council Alternate Seat to the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. Is there discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
Mr. Myers or Mr. Sherman? I'm sorry, could you say that again? This was created by policy and not ordinance, or I just want to get the framework right.
Your Honor, yes, that's, that's correct. It's, the Senior Advisory Board was created by several council motions over the years, but not, not by ordinance.
Oh, okay. This is one of those commissions that also has its own bylaws. And I remember we've had issues with appointments of the members of the public. Do the bylaws allow this? Do the senior board's bylaws allow this?
Mr. Mayor.
We probably know if it prevents it. Yes, sir.
Because it was established by resolution, and it is, the composition of the board is included in the bylaws. The Council established, the Council established the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and the Council could amend, amend their, their own motion or their own resolution establishing the board to add, to provide for a council alternate.
So maybe the motion should be stated, a motion to amend the council resolution governing the Senior Citizens Advisory Board?
Yes, Your Honor.
To allow for a council alternate? Would you restate the motion that way?
You want me to restate it?
Uh, no, just agree with those words I just said. Ms. Graffstein, do you support?
Yes, I support that.
Okay, I'll restate the motion to, the motion would be to amend the City Council Resolution governing the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission to specifically add a council alternate seat. Any other discussion?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Just that, most of these boards, I think, would benefit from having an alternate seat. If you look at the last three that we created, every one of them had an alternate. You know, if, if the council member is ill or incapacitated, or doesn't have the schedule availability to get there, having an alternate, I think, makes sense. So I support this, and I'd also support us going back to look at some of the other ones and potentially, you know, adding some alternate seats down the road. It just provides our council with some more flexibility to make sure that a representative is always there.
Okay, any other discussion? Alright, let's vote on this, this is just a vote to amend the council resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Alright, the motion carries. So therefore, can I please have a motion to appoint a council alternate to the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I think that was such a great idea, Mr. Soltis, I would like to name you for the alternate as a senior board.
Thank you, Councilman Corbett.
Uh, thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion on appointing Mr. Soltis as the Council Alternate to the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission? Alright, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Thank you, alright, turning the page. Continuing council appointments to boards and commissions, next we have Item 16, which is SEMCOG. Can I have motions regarding the city representative?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to reappoint Ms. Scott as the Council Representative to SEMCOG.
Thank you, is there?
Assuming she accepts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Soltis. Any discussion on appointing Councilwoman Scott as the city rep to SEMCOG? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. The motion carries. Can I have a motion regarding the alternate seat to SEMCOG?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scott.
I would like to nominate Councilman Dave Soltis for the city alternate to SEMCOG.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second that.
Thank you, Ms. Graffstein. Any discussion on appointing Mr. Soltis as the city alternate to SEMCOG? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Alright, the motion carries, just like all the others. Next is Youth Assistance, motion, please?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I don't know where we left this one. I would move to reappoint Mrs. Scott, if she'll accept, to the Youth Assistance.
Now, do I make a substitute motion on this?
Or you can just say no, and then I'll do whatever you want.
Okay, I'll say no. I'll say no.
Then I'll bet you have an idea, then.
Yes, I would like to nominate Councilor Rosalyn Graffstein to that position on Youth Assistance.
Thank you, is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett.
I always support better motions than mine, so yes.
Thank you. Alright, good night. I'm sorry, let's see, uh, any discussion on appointing Counselor Graffstein as the Council Rep to Youth Assistance? Alright, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Can we put an alternate on these last two since we're about to go through them?
An alternate on what?
On the Youth Assistance and then the Zoning Board.
It's an outside agency, it's a private organization, so we should talk to them first.
Okay.
And for Zoning Board?
That's ordinance, Your Honor.
Ordinance.
Okay.
Which is not, it just, it's a little more drawn out of a.
We can talk to staff later about that.
It just takes a couple steps.
So, uh, let's see, Board Number 18 will be the Zoning Board of Appeals. Is there a motion from Council?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I move that we reappoint Councilman Corbett as the Council Representative to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, is there a second?
Your Honor.
Mr. Soltis.
Second, please.
Thank you, any discussion on appointing Councilman Corbett as the Council Rep to the Zoning Board of Appeals? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. The motion carries. Any other appointments I missed? If I didn't state, all motions passed, and all the terms are for two-year terms expiring 11/11/19. Alright, there's no executive session tonight. So before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from City Council, and I'd like to begin with Mr. Corbett.
Um, I actually have a few this evening, sir. First, I'd like to congratulate Counselor Graffstein and the re-elected members of council and yourself, Your Honor. As I said, I think last meeting, you know, campaigns, and especially at the, the level that this one was conducted, I mean, there was just a lot of energy and a lot of effort. Can be very exhausting. And, and congratulations, and to those who didn't place in the top three, I want to congratulate you and honor your work too. The community is much better when there are more voices out there, even if your voice isn't the one picked to be heard every other week. This time, it's good that you contributed, and thank you very much. I wanted to acknowledge the passing, and I'm sorry, I'm actually late, it's probably a month or more now, of a, of a real sweet lady, and I, I didn't even know she was, she had passed. And maybe you remember Irene Landino. I said that right, right? She was Santa Claus, the lady for Santa Claus. I'm s- I'm getting a weird look here, I want to make sure I just didn't prematurely terminate. I said that correct, right? Okay. Irene Landino, if you'd ever been to any of the Goodfellow meetings, or sessions, or the, so on. She, she was, played Mrs. Claus, and she was just a sweet lady. And, and really, I mean, the earth is a better place that she was here, and we're less sure that she isn't. I don't, I really don't have the name or anything, but if maybe a resolution, we could, Margene, you know everybody. You must know a contact, how to reach the family, or.
I, I think we could ask Jean Linville, I think Jean was a very good friend of.
Yeah, if you could, before you leave, Jean, if you could just provide staff with an address or a phone number, maybe have the family in to recognize the lady's body of work for many years. So. Speaking of Goodfellas, Saturday, the 25th, there will be members of our community braving traffic and the weather potentially at the corners in our city. I was discussing it today with the treasurer, who I also happen to live with, and she was telling me and reaffirmed that really, other than the, the money, other than the cost of postage and some small promotional things, every other dime goes directly to the kids and their families. It provides gifts during the holiday season, and, and does provide some food support. That's not the main mission, but that is included part of a comprehensive holiday celebration, so. And, at the next meeting, or prior to the next meeting, where we had the tree lighting ceremony, there will be a gift ba- or a ta- a ba- canister to accept gift donations, if anybody's so inclined. And checks can always be dropped off, made out to Madison Heights Goodfellas at the, at the police station, and they'll be more than happy to do that. One other item, and it's, it's that time of the year again, and we have been talking about the issue of code enforcement, and, and over the course of the campaign. I would like to ask the staff to prepare a report and an actual reinstituting. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we did an enhanced code enforcement at different places in the city. It provided, in return for compensation, you know, time off and so on. We worked overtime, we brought additional staff in, and, and we did a very street-by-street level analysis, something we, it's very difficult to do, just in the course of the year. I don't remember, thousands of calls come in to the police and to them, to, to the building authority, to look at things through the year. So it's very hard to just stop and start at the end of the block and go through it. So it was very successful some years ago when we did it, and I think it, I think it's appropriate that, that we renew that effort. And so if staff could prepare a report and, and set a timeline, I believe there's not a budget problem. I think there's sufficient funds anticipating.
Your Honor, we'd be happy to provide council with a report, and we are about to, about to start, if we haven't already, our, our late, our late fall code enforcement sweep, which I think council.
Well, that, yeah, depending on the dimensions of it, it would probably be what, what council has been thinking about in the past. And on that note, that's it, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bliss.
Yes, Your Honor, so first, I, I know we all mentioned it at, at the last meeting, because this meeting can get a little bit away from us, but I'd, I'd like to, once again, thank Rich Clark for his service to the city. I wasn't around for all of them, but I'm told that he only missed one meeting in his entire tenure, and he's already 1-0 in, in watching this council, though I suspect that record is going to diminish as he finds out what to do with his Monday nights. I'd also like to welcome Counselor Graffstein to the mix, our newest colleague. We're excited with the, the energy that, that you're bringing, and you've got a lot of lofty goals, and, you know, I'm, I'm really excited that we're going to be able to work with you to accomplish some of those. I also wanted to thank my peers. I appreciate your trust in me to, to keep rolling as Mayor Pro Tem. It means a lot to me to have your, your support, and, you know, I won't let you down. Finally, I wanted to talk about the Arts Board. We had our first meeting, and that was an incredible experience. I mean, the energy in the room was palpable, like you could, you could feel it. Councilwoman Scott can, can elaborate as we get down, down the row here, but we had so much excitement. I mean, even just things as trivial as picking, you know, who the officers of the committee would be. We're met with high levels of passion for the things that we could do and we could accomplish. We already have several ideas in motion, we have a second meeting scheduled for December 4th. We actually had a member of the public at our first meeting, we invite any members of the public to come out to that second meeting on December 4th. I believe we're doing it at 6:15, 6:15 PM in the back conference room here. And it's just a really, really amazing thing when you get people passionate about not just their city, but the potential of what the city can be. And that was the, the biggest takeaway for me in that room, is how amazing and how incredibly passionate that group of volunteers were. I expect very big things out of this board, and I can't wait for us on council to support them in the things that they do and accomplish. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Geddings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Clark, just want to thank you for all your years of service, all the meetings you went to, all the ideas you had, all the sweat you put in on the repair program. You are a great, great councilman. I was glad to serve the little time I had with you. You're a good leader, and I thank you. And to Rosalyn, congratulations, welcome to the council. Hope you have great ideas and hope everything works out for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Geddings. City Attorney, Mr. Sherman.
Mr. Mayor, first of all, congratulations to you on your reelection.
Thank you.
Congratulations to our re-elected council members, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss and Councilman Soltis. And congratulations to our newly-elected Counselor Graffstein. We look forward to working with all of you as, as well as with the rest of council. I made comments at the last meeting about Rich Clark, on behalf of my brother who's present, and Nick Rochowsky, and really on behalf of my, my entire family. My dad happens to be at this particular meeting tonight, staying up late, watching what we do on every other Monday, second and fourth Monday nights. But Rich, Rich is a wonderful person, we're going to miss him, and just because he's not on council anymore, doesn't mean he's not going to be a vibrant part of the city. And lastly, to all of our residents, since we don't have a meeting before Thanksgiving, I want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager, Mr. Myers.
Yes, Your Honor, I too want to congratulate Counselor Graffstein, Councilman Soltis, Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, and, and Your Honor for your, your reelection. I look forward to working with you, Rosalyn. I also want to say what a pleasure and an honor it was to, to work with, with Rich Clark over the years. A class act, and I want to echo exactly what Bob Geddings and Larry said, we appreciate your service, Rich, and you were, you were tireless on behalf of our residents. Tree lighting's coming up on the 27th at 6:30. The city, once again, is, is looking for donations, so if you, if you could, to contact City Manager's office. We appreciate anything that you could give to help keep this privately funded event going, and that's all, Your Honor, thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk, Ms. Prince.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to also welcome everybody back, and congratulations to Counselor Graffstein. I wanted to thank our election workers that worked, and our student election workers that worked on our November 7th city election. They are instrumental in making our election run smoothly, and the city could not do it without them, so thank you again.
Thank you. Counselor Graffstein.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who helped me get where I am today, and I look forward to serving the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Yeah, I actually do have something to say, ooh, you better not. But I would like to congratulate the winners of the election, especially to our new Counselor, Rosalyn Graffstein. It's a pleasure to have another female voice and to be here. And I did notice that, I hope you all did notice that, that way across the country and the state, there were so many women elected to office. So hopefully it's a trend, because I think women are just as appropriate in these positions as men are. And I really would like to thank all the men that I have served with all these years. They've been role models to me, and I appreciate their input. They have never caused me any, any, any derogatory things, so I want to thank them for all their graciousness and their respect. They've done a good job, and I know Rosalyn is going to do a great job as well. I want to thank for everybody who's appointed me to the committees again. I did want to also mention about the tree lighting on November the 27th at 6:30, is that 6:30? But I did want to mention that they will be honoring Ed Swanson, our former mayor, that night too. So his family will be here, and if anybody would like to contribute anything, that would be wonderful if you could say something. And please remember, the Historical Commission would still like to honor him, and we're asking for anybody who had any association with Ed to please submit their thoughts about him. We want to compile a nice notebook and keep it in the Historical Commission about his life and the memories that people had of him. And also, we want to give a copy of that to his family to keep for fond memories. I would also like to say that this week, maybe you don't know this, but I was on SEMCOG, and there is a special celebration this week, they are honoring November 13th through the 19th as Traffic Incident Responders Week. And I really didn't know this existed, but it's only been around for a year, but I was really very interested in this site, and the reason. They want to recognize the fact, and everybody should know, that there is now state law that when you are approaching an accident scene, that you need to take an extra lane. If you can't do that, if you can't get through and move over away from the accident scene, they ask you to be very cautious to put your lights on, and please respect what is going on. And I did have some statistics, I hate to belabor this, but there, this does involve life and death situations. And traffic accidents are the number one cause of death for EMS and EMT responders. And 13% of all police and firefighter deaths are vehicle-related. There's also been a number of tow operator deaths on Michigan roadways recently, and I hadn't thought about that, but tow trucks are also taking their lives in their hand by trying to rescue these people and rescue the vehicles. There's a moveover law that requires motorists to move over with. There's a moveover law that requires motorists to move over with their lights activated or slow down and pass with caution if it's not possible to safely change their lanes, as well as for road service vehicles. So this was new to me, the fact that we need to allow room for road service vehicles, including tow trucks and courtesy vans. There is also a new law on Michigan called steer it, clear it, and it requires drivers to move their vehicles from the main traveling portion of the roadway if their vehicle has been hit or involved in an accident. And if you can move it, if it's operable, you need to move it away from the main roadway, off to the side as far as you can go, so that you don't get hit in a further accident result. So if you would like to stay informed, that was another suggestion by SEMCOG, that there is an app called MyDrive, and that's M.I.-D.R.I.V.E., that you can put on your phone, and what it does, it notifies you of any hazard conditions. So it's also potential hazards with the weather, with any accidents that you may be coming up towards, so that you can, at that point, make an informed decision, do I want to continue on this road, or shall I leave this road and take a detour? And you can decide that before you get to the accident. So that's what's really nice about it. It tells you ahead of time. Also, I wanted to suggest that there is an event tomorrow morning, so there's not much warning, at 10 o'clock at the AAA Auto Club in Dearborn, where they're inciting, they would like people to come and attend that, especially people that are in the police, the fire, the ambulance, and tow professionals to hear that seminar. So I think it'd be very, very beneficial. I don't think there's a charge, so. And that's all, Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry to go on that, but that, to me, was an important thing to talk about.
Thank you very much. Mr. Soltis.
Thank you, your honor. That's great, Councilwoman Scott, because, you know, I rode EMS for years, and fortunately, I never had an accident, but I did have a friend that got clipped on the freeway, on the lodge, so that's an important issue. I wish they would look at the law where people have to pull over when the ambulance are coming by, but believe it or not, I can't tell you how many times I'd look over and there's like a car right next to me speeding around, so thank you for mentioning that. And I want to thank the residents for allowing me another four years to serve as a public servant. I'm honored to do that. Congratulations to the new council, the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilor Grafstein. I guess I'm on the woman power side now? That's all right. That's good.
We all better be.
Good. Yeah, just look out for me. You know, and all the candidates that participated in this year's elections, you know what? It takes a lot of guts. I don't think people realize how tough it is when you're knocking on doors, and, you know, I can't tell you how many times, you know, I got dogs barking at me, jumping at me, I almost got tripped, you know, tripping over all kinds of stairs and no trespass signs. You got cameras looking right at you, you know, when you're ringing the doorbell. I mean, it's tough, so I give everybody credit for doing that. It takes a lot of guts. Also, I want to thank you for the Women's Club for allowing the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and myself, to serve at your annual autumn tea. I think it's always wonderful. That was my third year. I really enjoyed it. And to be, for us to be auctioned off as well. I think that there was a tall skinny Elvis that showed up there, too, wasn't there?
Yeah.
There was.
He's got the scarf to prove it.
We got a story here.
Yeah, there's pictures flying around somewhere, so. Councilman Clark, thank you so much for your service. You're a wonderful councilwoman, excuse me, councilman. I'm getting all mixed up with that. But thank you. It was an honor to serve with you. That's all.
Thank you to all eight candidates for city council. I was really inspired by your positivity. I mean, there was no negative campaigning that I noticed. People really wanted to contribute to the city of progress, and congratulations to the three who were sworn in tonight. Look forward to working with you over the next couple of years. Huge thank you to Councilman Rich Clark for your years of service, and also, I'd want to thank Councilman Rich Clark for giving a very moving speech at the Veterans Day luncheon at the senior center last week. Also, thank you to the senior center for hosting that important event honoring our military veterans. Also, thank you to our Women's Club for hosting the luminary ceremony in honor of Veterans Day. Oh, and during the month of October, our firefighters were participating in a breast cancer awareness program called Real Men Wear Pink. Maybe some of you bought their T-shirts that were with pink lettering. They took third, our Madison Heights firefighters took third place in Oakland County for raising money for breast cancer awareness. So tip of the cap to them. And is there any further business before council tonight? All right, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. I promise there'll be a fraction of this length in the future. Good evening.